For Monday, September 5th, 2017, I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "O Canada."
(Singing) O Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to a graduate of our Grand Prairie Boys Choir, a member of the Men of Note organization here in Grand Prairie, for that rousing rendition of "O Canada." For those people in the audience, we don't always have the volume so high, but it was great. I think that was enjoyable, right? I know I couldn't hear myself sing, which is probably better for everybody anyhow. So we'll move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to adopt that set of minutes from August 21st? Thank you, Councillor O'Toole.
Seventeen.
Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. I was missing my buttons. I tried to make everybody vote there for a second. If you could just make that motion again, because we didn't have your microphone on. Sorry, my apologies.
I don't know if I'll get it right or not, but I'll try it again. I move that the minutes of the City of Grand Prairie Council Meeting be held Monday, August 21st, 2017, be approved.
Great. Thanks very much, Councillor O'Toole. We'll get all the kinks worked out in our first two sort of actions of the council meeting. Are there any discussion or debate with respect to that council meeting? Are there any errors or omissions in the minutes we need to correct before we adopt them? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And then we look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda. Councillor Radburn.
Mayor Given, I would move the council adopt the agenda as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as presented? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. That handles all of our meeting startup business and brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have at every regular city council meeting for anyone in the community to come forward and address council on any community business, as long as it's not the subject of a public hearing. And I know we do have a couple of public hearings on the agenda tonight, and so if you're here for either of those, there'll be time for you to address council a little bit later on. And from time to time, we do take care of special business during our delegation portion. We have one piece of that this evening, and it's a proclamation in recognition of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. This request for proclamation was submitted to the mayor's office, and it's my pleasure to be able to make that proclamation in recognition this month here this evening. So, whereas between 2010 and 2016, just under 8,000 Canadian children have been diagnosed with cancer, and from 2010 to 2016, of these, one in five will die five years or less after diagnosis. And whereas the number of Canadian children, 0 to 14, being diagnosed with cancer continues to rise 0.04% each year, and whereas in spite of the fact that researchers have helped improve global five-year life expectancies beyond 80%, some childhood cancers are still considered terminal upon diagnosis, and whereas families coping with childhood cancer face significant financial burden during treatment and ongoing psychological impacts, and whereas 30% of survivors may face severe life-threatening side effects of treatments, and whereas only three child-specific drugs have been approved to fight cancer since 1980, and whereas September of each year is recognized internationally as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month by the World Health Organization, and whereas by working with Alberta nonprofit support groups such as Kids with Cancer Society and Kids Cancer Care, I encourage all citizens to learn more about how they can make a positive impact in the lives of children with cancer. Therefore, I, Mayor Given, Mayor City of Grand Prairie, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2017 to be Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Grand Prairie. So it's my pleasure to make that proclamation today and would encourage residents to do what they can to support those families and children in our community facing cancer diagnosis and support the aid organizations that support them. So, thank you. Thanks. So that was our piece of scheduled business during the delegation portion of the agenda. Was there anybody here to address council on any matter not related to a public hearing? I don't see anybody even flinching in their chairs, so it doesn't look like we have anybody here for the delegation portion of our agenda. As I say, it is an opportunity that exists at every regular city council meeting, so anybody can avail themselves of that opportunity. We'll move into public hearings then. We'll close the delegation portion of our agenda. And we'll move into public hearing, item 6.1, bylaw C-1260-76, the Land Use Bylaw Amendment to the low-density mixed-use apartments in the Central Commercial District. I would call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. This is a Land Use Bylaw Amendment to allow for low-density mixed-use apartments in the Central Commercial District. The reason this amendment is required is because over the past few years, there have been several amendments to the Land Use Bylaw that have made these existing units legal nonconforming within the downtown, and it also prohibits the creation of new rental units with fewer than three units. So one of these amendments was the change to the definition of mixed-use apartments, which require that they have a minimum of three units. Another amendment that could possibly impact this is the change to the definition of apartments within the CC district, which requires a minimum of 24 units. The reason for this amendment is because we want to make the Land Use Bylaw more flexible to be in line with the downtown enhancement plan, which intends to create a diversity of uses, including a mix of residential. And with the current Land Use Bylaw requiring at least three units, the cost can be prohibitive to small business owners with buildings wanting to add maybe a second story with two apartments or development of that nature. The intent of this amendment is to make that possible. So the proposed amendments will allow mixed-use apartment buildings with up to two units under this definition. The reason why it is a separate definition from the existing one is because it allows for these apartments to be in other parts of the building other than the second floor or higher. So there is a potential for apartments on the ground floor. However, the wording prohibits the displacement of storefronts, so the apartments would be required to be located in a secondary area such as the back of the building. It is also proposed to be discretionary development officer. That way adjacent property owners will be notified and development officers will have greater ability to provide comments on the layout to match the intent of this amendment. In terms of stakeholder engagement, we did the regular advertising in the newspaper for the public hearing. We also consulted with the Downtown Business Association. Initially, they expressed concerns over the potential of storefronts being displaced. We amended the wording to prohibit this and gain the support of the Downtown Business Association, as well as address internal concerns with that possibility. So our recommendation is that council give all three readings to this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Mr. Drosh. Are there any questions for administration from council at this time? We'll have another opportunity to do that later on after any public presentations. Any questions for administration? Okay, seeing none, then we'll open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. Is there anybody here this evening that wanted to make a presentation related to bylaw C-1260-76, Land Use Bylaw Amendment? Is there anybody here this evening that wanted to make a presentation with respect to this public hearing? Ask one final time if there's anybody that wished to make a presentation with respect to the Land Use Bylaw Amendment regarding low-density mixed-use apartments in the Central Commercial District? Okay, again, seeing nobody coming forward, we'll close the presentation submission portion of the public hearing and I'll look to council one last time. Are there any questions for administration? Councillor Clayton. Sure, no, okay, no questions for administration, so we'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to business rising, and then I'll return back to Councillor Clayton.
Given, I would move that council approve bylaw C-1260-76, a Land Use Bylaw Amendment, low-density mixed-use apartments in the Central Commercial District.
Sure, thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. And so we'll do that as first reading of that Land Use Bylaw Amendment. So a motion for first reading. There's no discussion and debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Clayton?
I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-76.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on second reading of this Land Use Bylaw Amendment? Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I would just thank administration for highlighting the fact that this will be discretionary, meaning that it will be reviewed. It wouldn't be as of right, and so anything that would come forward would be reviewed by administration and ultimately, if necessary, by committee. So thanks for making sure that that's incorporated. I don't see anybody else in the queue for discussion or debate, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Clayton?
I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1260-76 at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Councillor Clayton. So as council is well aware, for council to have all three readings of any public hearing or any Land Use Bylaw Amendment at the same council meeting, we have to have a motion in order to have that third and final reading. In order for this motion to pass, it must pass unanimously. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Again, seeing nobody in the queue, I will call for the vote on the motion to have third and final reading. Thank you. That motion does carry unanimously. Councillor Clayton?
I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-76, being an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw. Speaking to that motion, I wanted to commend administration for their work in regards to consultation with the downtown association and property owners there, and this is sort of something that council has worked on this entire term in regards to mixed-density use in the CC district. So I think this is a great step going forward.
Thanks, Councillor Clayton. Any other discussion or debate? Again, seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That brings us to item 6.2, a public hearing related to the Kensington area structure plan, outline plan, and bylaw, Land Use Bylaw Amendment C-1260-55. I would call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Before I get started with the presentation, I'd like to mention to council that there was an error in the landowner notification, specifically the adjacent landowner notification. And as a result, administration would like to send out letters to all adjacent property owners and continue with the presentation, have council give first reading, and have people who may have an opportunity to speak at a public hearing, have the public hearing continue until September 18th. And I will now continue with the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Administration received applications to amend the municipal development plan, to adopt the Kensington area structure plan, to adopt the proposed Kensington outline plan, and to amend the Land Use Bylaw, to rezone land in accordance with the proposed plans. At the May 16th city council meeting, council approved an amendment to the municipal development plan. The purpose of that amendment was to redesignate land between the CN Railway and 84th Avenue from industrial to a mix of residential and commercial. This MDP amendment was presented to council in advance of the outline plan and the area structure plan in order to give council a chance to consider the land use adjacent to the railway. The proposed Kensington area structure plan and outline plan have the same planned boundaries. The plans apply to the land to the west end edge of the city, west of 116th Street and north of 76th Avenue. The plan areas apply to 122.7 hectares of land, bounded to the north by the Canadian National Railway Line and to the east by 116th Street and south by 76th Avenue. The properties adjacent to the north and south are currently being used for agricultural production, as well as the subject property. The land to the east includes residential and industrial to the northeast. A biophysical impact assessment was done as part of this application, and two Class II wetlands were found on the site. Due to the classification of the wetlands, they are protected under the Water Act, and the biophysical report recommended that these wetlands have a 15-meter repairing setback. And this has been maintained and designated as environmental reserve in the plan, and the forested area around that area has also been maintained and preserved as municipal reserve on the plan as a forested area. The north boundary of the property is also adjacent to the Canadian National Railway Line, and in order to ensure safety and to mitigate the impacts of the noise and vibration, the developer has committed to following the guidelines for new development in proximity to railway operations. And these are mentioned in the outline plan as well, that these will be followed. These plans are in conformance with municipal development plan. It is in conformance with the land use map as amended in May, and it also conforms with the... Council will encourage the application of smart growth neighborhood design guidelines in preparing new residential ASPs and OPS. This outline plan incorporates many smart growth guidelines identified in the MDP, such as providing a variety of housing types, creating pedestrian-oriented neighborhood with community park as a focal point, linking open spaces throughout planned pathways, maintaining the wetlands in the existing forested area, using a modified grid pattern, and incorporating the storm system into the open space by providing trails around the storm ponds. The area structure plan is the first plan that is being proposed to be adopted, is a high-level planning document in the planning process. It provides the general structure for the proposed development for the land use and servicing, and serves as the guideline to inform the outline plan. The ASP identifies the future land use as primarily residential with a commercial development in the northeast corner of the plan area. The proposed development is compatible with the neighborhoods to the east, which include residential neighborhoods of Pinnacle and West Point. The commercial node is located in close proximity to arterial roads, which serves to reduce traffic within the neighborhood. As per the Municipal Government Act, 10% of the developable land must be either provided as land or cash-in lieu. The entire municipal reserve dedication is in the form of land in the proposed ASP. Several neighborhood parks and a large community park are proposed throughout the plan area. The proposed ASP is also consistent with the city's master plants, as well as Aquitara's master plants for water and sewer. The outline plan, which is also proposed to be adopted, is the detailed planning framework for the plan boundary, and includes the layout of the future roads and lanes, open spaces, land uses, and zoning. The Kensington outline plan further refines the Kensington neighborhood. The plan's developable area is 116.8 hectares and will be comprised of 60.7 hectares of residential, 10.9 of commercial, 11.6 hectares of open space, and 8.8 of storm ponds. It is anticipated that the residential area will accommodate 1,189 dwelling units. The parks and open space, as mentioned before, the entire area is dedicated as land, which is 11.7 hectares. This will be comprised of a 4.7 hectare park located centrally in the neighborhood, a 2.6 hectare natural park incorporating the existing forested area and the wetlands, and three neighborhood parks which are well distributed and provide for easy access to the future residents. Their size and configuration will allow for playgrounds and grassy playfields. The Kensington outline plan had design reports submitted for the transportation, water, storm, and sewer, and have all been approved by the city's engineering department, as well as by Aquitara. The subject property is currently zoned urban reserve. The proposed rezoning is identified in Figure 4. The residential development includes proposed rezonings to general residential, small lot residential, combined residential, and a manufactured home community. The commercial development is proposed to be arterial commercial, and the storm ponds and park space will be public service. The final phase of the plan area in the southeast corner of the plan will remain urban reserve. This is because there's an industrial business currently located on the property, and rezoning will only occur after a Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental assessment has occurred and that property has been cleaned up. In addition, the area is governed by the city's airport vicinity overlay. All development applications will be reviewed to ensure they do not exceed height restrictions or conflict with the operations of the airport. Advertising of the public hearing was completed for some aspects of the municipal government act and not completely for the Land Use Bylaw, and that is why administration is recommending that letters go out to adjacent landowners and that they have an opportunity to speak at this public hearing. However, there was an open house held by the applicant. The applicant did hand-deliver letters to the neighboring adjacent area. Administration attended the open house, and there was one person that came and didn't have any concerns with it. There are some people who have called and inquired, and there are some people that I believe are here to speak to the matters that they would like addressed. The proposed Kensington neighborhood will include a variety of housing types, including a manufactured home community, single and semi-detached dwellings, street-oriented townhouses, a large community commercial site that could be developed as grocery stores, gas bars, and retail in close proximity to the arterial roads. The neighborhood will also contain a number of open spaces, including a large community park, natural park, and three neighborhood parks. These open spaces will be linked by trails, which will link to other existing neighborhoods and new residential development in the area. Administration recommends that council give first reading to bylaws C-1343, C-1344, and C-1260-55, and recess the public hearing and reconvene the public hearing on September 18th at 2017 at approximately 6:30 p.m. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Ms. Downing. And so just for council, a little bit different than our process with the previous one. Appreciate administration's efforts to ensure that all landowners in the area are appropriately notified, and at the same time, we want to make sure that anybody that attended this evening with an intent to speak on the issue has that opportunity to do that. So I think we can accomplish both with administration's recommendation. And so I would look for a motion for first reading. And now we have to do first reading of each of the three different bylaws. Councillor Rice?
I move first reading of bylaw C-1343, bylaw to adopt the Kensington area structure plan.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Rice. So as with any first reading, no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Rice, do you want to carry on with the next one?
I move first reading of bylaw 1344, bylaw to adopt the Kensington outline plan.
Thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Again, with the first reading, our procedure bylaw doesn't allow for discussion or debate at this point. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor Rice?
I move first reading of bylaw C-1260-55, an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Councillor Rice. Again, a first reading, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. And so at this time, I will open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. I'd ask if there's anyone here to speak in support of the proposed area structure plan, outline plan, and land use bylaw amendment. Gentlemen, welcome if you'd care to introduce yourself.
Mr. ... Is there a question?
Sure, Councillor Rice, you have a question?
They're being allowed to speak tonight. Will they also be allowed to speak on the 18th?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yeah, I think the full intention here is that there may be issues that arise, and we certainly want to ensure that there's opportunity for dialogue between the landowners in the subject area. So, gentlemen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. My name's Dave McCray. I'm the Land Use Planning Manager of ISL Engineering and Land Services, and with me is Scott Rossler from Helix Engineering. We were engaged to prepare the plan on behalf of the owners. I just have just a few remarks that I would like to make in support of the plan. First of all, for council's information, we started this project actually with the original owners, the prior owners back in 2013, and so there's been some time in getting to this point, and we appreciate that the efforts that administration have made to work through this process with us. As noted in the administration's report, the ASP and the outline plan are supported by the policies of the municipal development plan, and that the municipal development plan was previously amended by council to allow for residential and commercial development north of 84th Avenue instead of industrial. What however was not noted in administration's report that is equally important in our view is that the MDP was also amended last year to remove the requirement that 25% of all residential units in outline plans be medium-density units, instead opting for a city-wide average approach to the issue. And what that enabled us to do was put together a plan that provides a diversity of housing forms, single-family, lane development, semi-detached, low-profile multifamily, that are all fully integrated and suit the location and the context for the site. So there's not going to be any multi-story apartment buildings, for example, that would sort of pop out of nowhere. Also, it was an opportunity to provide a mobile or manufactured home community opportunity, which enables the developer to address a growing gap in the Grand Prairie market for that for that form of housing. And also, the commercial site allows the future commercial market in the southwest part of the city to be accommodated. And also, because of limitations of the airport noise exposure contours, the area where the commercial is being proposed is not suitable for residential, so commercial's a good fit, not only for technical reasons with the airport, but just the location adjacent to two arterial roadways. The proposed design of the neighborhood also emphasizes, as administration indicated, a lot of open space and pedestrian connectivity, linear parks that connect neighborhood parks with a central commercial park, or sorry, a community park, and a large natural park on the west end of the neighborhood to preserve that natural asset. Fully 10% of the MRL allocation is in the form of land, and that does not include park space that will also be provided within the manufactured home community as part of the developer's responsibility there, so we're actually kind of double-dipping on the open space, but it's to the benefit of the neighborhood and to the city as a whole. So that's really all I have, and I'll turn it over to Scott if he's got any comments. But basically, I think what we've done is we've put together a very well-considered plan. It's supported by administration, and we do look forward to receiving approval, probably on the 18th.
Thanks very much, Mr. McCray. Mr. Rossler?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and council. Just to add to a few of the constraints that we worked through with the engineering process, we do have a railway on the north side of the property, so that was something that was discussed at length with the planning department at the city. I believe, I'm not, don't quote me on this, but I believe on the 18th, there's also a railway mitigation policy coming forward to council. So we may see a little bit more at that time, but essentially what that does is protect the future residents of the adjacent lands from the noise mitigation vibrations and whatnot that may occur with the rail. It's a low-use rail, it's a secondary branch line, so one to three trains per day averaging, I believe, less than five is what CN's recommendations are on that. So no issues or concerns there. We did try to focus most of our stormwater retention and whatnot within the development just to take advantage of the units backing onto the ponds and whatnot, and also to accommodate the west sanitary trunk sewer, so 116th Street trunk sewer with Aquitara that flows through the middle of this development. Obviously, we had to design around that. So keeping in mind the adjacent properties and parcels, we've got water lines to the south with Aquitara's low-pressure system, and arterials on the east side and what acts currently typically like an arterial on the south. But with the rerouting of 84th through the neighborhood, we feel we've got a development here that will be very attractive to future landowners, with the intention of maintaining a lot of the natural space and whatnot that are desired by purchasers. So if there are any questions, I guess with regards to the plan or how we came about to it, we'd be happy to answer.
Thanks very much, Mr. Rossler. Any questions for the delegation? Any questions at this point? Councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple of quick questions, Scott and Dave. I'm glad to hear about the full MIR is going to be... I'm glad to hear about the full MR is going to be utilized within the whole area, but the manufactured area say, well, that's going to be above and beyond, but they can also build that a certain way that's not going to be for the rest of the area being developed. So do we have a pinpoint of how much in the manufactured home area will be MR or for playgrounds? Because we know the streets are not going to be as thick in pavement and a little bit narrower, tighter homes. Is there, by the developer, is there a percentage-wise that's going to be in that big chunk area right by the railroad tracks?
Yes, Counselor McLean, the land use bylaw lays out those requirements. My understanding, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's the equivalent of 10% as well.
Inside. It's Counselor McLean. Counselor Thiessen. Sorry, Counselor Thiessen, re-enter there.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a follow-up question, I guess, to Counselor McLean's. That 10% MR, is that the wetlands ponds? Is that included in there, or is that separate from everything else? And then you're going to incorporate the 10% in the other parts of the manufactured home plots?
Essentially, on, if you look at the outline plan map, I don't know what map it is in your agenda package. It's map four from the outline plan. All of the-
With the overhead camera there, gentlemen, so you can-
All of the, all of the green is, is going to be the municipal reserve. So that includes areas that are around the storm ponds. The blue are the storm ponds or other public until lots themselves, which is up and over and above the MR allocation. So they work in tandem.
Okay, so, oh, sorry, that's a little up. So inside the actual manufactured home community, there's not going to be an allotment for park space for the families to?
There would be an additional 10% required, and that's, so this is, under the subdivision and municipal government act, we provide 10% with the development, but because that's a manufactured home community, and the, the city has a development permitting policy on that as well, so there's an additional 10% within that. It's approximately, if I'm mistaken, around 65 acres or so. So if that, if it's 65 acres, there would be six and a half acres of green space given within that. It would be privately held and owned, but developed as green space.
Beautiful. Thanks for that clarification. I did actually have a couple of questions, if I may. One is in regard to map four that we're, we're on here now. There's a little purple box here that says road widening, but I couldn't find through the life of me where that purple road widening is actually going to take place. Is that just potential, or is there plans to widen any of those roads in there?
Thank you, Counselor Thiessen. That's, that's essentially a plotting, not even an error, it's just a very small. So the, the road widening that's required under the, under the design manual with the City of Grand Prairie's engineering department provides us with a certain width. Because 116th Street's been upgraded already, a lot of that road widening was already taken. So there actually is, if you watch on the screen there, there is a sliver. I think it's five meters wide. This is also a 300-acre plan, so the, the scale on this is quite small. So there is a sliver along, along the west side of 116th Street, but it's difficult to see.
It appears on the south side, like, I guess the north side of 76th Avenue as well, if I'm not colorblind, or if that's just a black line. But no, thank you for that. I just couldn't find it. And actually, my, I wanted to thank you guys. I really appreciate the design work of this, and the plan looks good. I'm no engineer, but I really appreciated the small touches, the linear park connections, and the allocation of the green spaces before subdivision. I guess my final question is about train whistles, and you alluded to it a little bit talking with CN. So there's going to be two crossings where CN's going to come across, and council for the lifeless can never avoid people complaining about how many times the train honks their whistles. Is there going to be any, I guess, builds, or maybe this is for administration too, but to mitigate, mitigate train whistles, maybe crossing arms or anything in, in the building of this, of this plan as it goes forward?
I believe the crossing on 116th Street does have arms.
Hmm, but I was looking more along the lines as 84 sort of comes down, and then yeah, it comes down to the Canadian Railway. It looks like the future road or the current road would continue across the tracks there.
Ultimately, it will. So we would, because this is the end of the property that is currently being developed, so we would actually end this road prior to the crossing at this stage. So sometime in the future, when, when the lands to the west are developed, that's likely going to be dealt with at that point. Our expectation at this stage is that there would be a turnaround constructed at the end of 84th. That's likely within the first phase of development here, so it's a good question. We don't have an answer necessarily at this stage, just because we're not intending to cross the tracks. But in the future, should that happen with any, with the adjacent plan, my understanding of CN's guidelines is, is as long as there are crossing arms, they don't blow their whistles. But that's, I mean, obviously, that could change. I don't expect, you know, we're probably several years away from, from that crossing occurring, so.
For sure. Thank you very much for your answers. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I just have a couple of questions about lots and residents. With the, with the play, with the way the plan is now, can you tell me how many single-family dwellings that there will be there that will be added to our city, and possibly the multifamily?
Yes, Counselor O'Toole, obviously, this is a best guess at this point.
Yeah, and I totally understand that.
We've got approximately 500, I'm rounding, but 550 single-family RG units, which is conventional single-family, no lanes, small lots without lanes, about 115, about 30 without lanes, and about 140 multifamily, low, low-density multifamily, and approximately 350 manufactured homes. So for a total of about, just under 1,200 units total.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor McLean. Sorry, Counselor McLean, I just have to turn my phone there again.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick question to Scott. There's a trail system along 116th with trees and coming up and along the road going to the, you can say, I guess, south there. I can't remember in the package here, or maybe I oversen it. Is that going to continue on, or is that going to stop right at the railroad tracks? Or is that going to continue on going south? So I guess you can say all the way from the tracks, all the way down to Costco, we have a trail system, or at least right till, I don't know, might be winters or whatever. So is that going to happen, continue on?
Our understanding is, is as 116th Street gets upgraded, that that trail south does continue. It does, at 76th Avenue, which is the south boundary of our planned area, it flips over to the east side of the street, but it does, the plan is for that to continue down, yes.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor McLean. I don't see any other questions for the delegation. Counsel, other questions for the delegation? Okay, seeing none. Thanks very much, gentlemen, for being available. You heard that this will be back on the 18th, and you're obviously welcome to attend this meeting and the next, but thank you for being here this evening to answer our questions.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is still the delegation portion of our public hearing. As I said, we want to ensure that anybody that came forward this evening wishing to speak on this topic, that you haven't wasted your time coming to City Hall this evening. We want to make sure that you have opportunity to speak. And so was there anybody else who wished to speak with respect to the Kensington outline plan and associated amendments? Anybody else that wished to come forward? It may have been some time since you've been in the hot seat down there, Mr. Field, but if you would care to introduce yourself and your partner in crime, just so that our recording secretary has your names for the record, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm Roger Field, and this is my wife, Angel. And we have a few questions.
Absolutely.
All right. In 2016, Mainline built a major sewer trunk line through there, through the, the land in question. I was just wondering if you can still build houses and roads on disturbed land? Does that create an unstable base for the roads and parks and basements of the houses in question? I'd like that addressed. Will be, will the public that's going to be buying these houses be informed of the history of the land? That that was, it was a 60-foot trench built across that. We watched that being built. Another concern was the railroad. We live there, so we hear the noise of the train, and it's either noise or music, I'm not sure. But it does go through all, and we're a greater distance from the track, but I can't imagine anybody living there and being subjected to that noise. And there's also the, I always think of the potential of a derailment, like, that happens. And is there going to be berms built, or ditches, or whatever? I'd just like to know about that. Under the flight path, the low-flying airplanes as, as well, that's a big concern for the noise. It's, it's really low there. I see on the plan many private homes that back onto, their backyards are on 116th Street. This has already been, this model has been used in the subdivision to the east of us, what's the name of it? Pinnacle Ridge. Their backyards are right onto a major thoroughfare, and you talked earlier about the council problem with kids. I'm not sure if there's a correlation, but it's awful. We have motorcycles and hot rods driving through there at night. It's just unbelievable. It's, would be horrendous to live there. And so that's already built, that exists, but I would hate to see it being redone again. There are dozens and dozens of homes there that in the plan that are going to back right onto a major 116th, which will be even busier in the future. I don't see that as healthy or desirable, and I don't know if anyone in this room would even buy a lot there, knowing that that's going to happen, you know, with this big noise. And four-lane highway in the future, mention that. Air quality is very poor along freeways and major thoroughfares. I think of babies, children, and shift workers. We have many visitors to our area, and they're always amazed after they look at the development that already exists in Pinnacle Ridge, and they say, holy man, that's inhuman to have how, you know, backyards along a major road like that. Here, we have a chance to change that, because it's not built yet. What else was there? We have a chance to correct this. I didn't see huge plans for trees. Our neighbor Bill McClellan has built a major big berm in the front of, for the future development at his place, to the east side of his land, and it's, it literally closes off all the noise from 116th. He had that soil that was brought from the construction of the Mainline, the storm sewer, or sewage sewer thing. So that was, that's something very desirable that I'd like to see there instead of backyards. We have, on our land, have developed wind shelter belts and trees that are now 30 years old, and they're very good for sound reduction, and it's beautiful. And I'd like to see that, more shelter belts, and I see it in other cities like Edmonton, St. Albert. And I'd like to know how we are living to the south of this development or going to be affected regarding dust, noise, and that's it. Those are my concerns, our concerns.
Another concern was along 116th was what was going to be, happen there, because when the four-lane goes through, I know it's, the right-of-way is there, and when that goes through, those houses are right now showing basically right on that thoroughfare. So maybe there should be some consideration relative to sound barrier and maybe the use of cul-de-sacs so that they're not basically focused on that. They're focused more along a corridor within the subdivision versus right along the 116th Street. So that was one of our, one of our concerns too. And the other thing was the, the use of bicycle paths around the, the development. The county put in a beautiful road on 76th Avenue that goes to Dim, Dimesdale, and never put any bike paths, and there's people biking on that all the time. Had there been a nice, nice path worked into that, it would have been a wonderful attribute to the City of Grand Prairie to have that path around there, because there's lots of people that bike there, utilize that, walk there, and it just adds to the city. So it's something that we would suggest and promote relative to city beautification. We all know that the city's lacking in some areas, right when you come into the city and outside of the city, for trees and so forth, and I think it's a chance to start in an area to develop something beautiful. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Field. Don't leave just yet. There is an opportunity if any council members have any questions for you. You asked some questions of us, though, and council, I don't think it's likely to have that information at hand, but there's certainly questions that administration's heard, and there may be questions from council to administration later on to follow up on some of those. But I see that we have at least one council member that has some questions for you. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I really liked what you brought up about disclosure, maybe, of where your home's going to be built, and it's above a main sewer line, and what kind of disclosures. I'm not sure if we have that in our policy. You can build a nice house by an RMR, it could be a four-story house, and it has to be, don't ask for a disclosure for real estate to sell the home or anything in our city. So I think you're bringing something up that's a really good potential, that, you know, there may not be no problem in engineered soil and building your home, make the footing wider, stuff like that. But full disclosure, I think, could be a great possibility for our policies to have on some of this building. So thank you. I want to say thank you for that. I think that was a great point, and I hope it doesn't get lost.
It's just so deep. That's 60 feet deep.
It'd be interesting to have disclosure.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. I don't see anybody else in the queue, except for Counselor Rice now. Counselor Rice?
I'm ready.
Okay. Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Well, we have some other people here as well. So, Mr. Field, thanks very much for being here this evening and presenting. As I said before, I'm sure we'll hear council follow up on some of the concerns that you raised when we get a last chance for questions for administration. So was there anybody else here this evening that wished to speak to the Kensington outline plan and associated amendments? Anybody else that wished to speak? Yeah, absolutely. Come on down. You've sort of seen the routine a couple of times, so if you'll just introduce yourself, be kind enough to introduce yourself for our recording secretary, and please feel free to make a presentation, and we'll see if there's any questions for you at the conclusion. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Given and council. My name is Carrie Warren, and I'm wondering about the impact of the 1,200 dwelling places on 68th Avenue. 68th Avenue between 116th Street and 108th Street. Right now, there is a tremendous amount of traffic there, and we are on the south side of 68th Avenue on Flying Shot Lots 9 and 10, the area directly west of where O'Brien is building. And right now, it is farmland, 70 acres, but I'm wondering what sort of impact, what sort of plans perhaps. There are plans for 68th Avenue to continue with four lanes there rather than the two.
I don't have that at hand, but I am almost certain that the ultimate plan for 68th Avenue would be a four-lane divided all the way to that intersection. So 68th Avenue and 116th would be an intersection of two four-lane divided roadways.
And so then, at that time, I'm wondering then, and perhaps Scott or Dave, perhaps Scott more than anyone could address the fact that some previous work done on 68th Avenue with some culverts have damaged the land that we are on, and perhaps redoing that 68th Avenue will rectify that, or perhaps that would be rectified before then. So just some considerations. We have not had much luck in the past with having that rectified when 68th Avenue was rebuilt there.
It was paved, okay.
When it was paved, you bet.
Okay. Thank you. So that's probably more of a question for administration, and again, that would be one I'm not sure that we would have the answer to in terms of the technical details of what the design of a future roadway would look like.
And I would just certainly agree with the Fields that this is an opportunity to make a standout area, community of Grand Prairie, so that it doesn't look like the rest of the subdivisions. Basically, there would be very few places in town that I would like to move in Grand Prairie, because it seems that one subdivision is the same as the next as the next, and this is really a jewel area piece of land, and the developer is fortunate enough to be able to do something unique with it. So I would just like that wish to be made known. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thanks very much. Now you saw it. Don't leave just right away. At least get an opportunity if there's any questions for the delegation. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just got a quick question for Carrie, just because we know 116th, it's getting busier in the city annex land, but the county has it, and we got a lot of big trucks coming down Highway 40. Eventually, if we can annex that or the county does their due diligence and build it so we have semis, do you know that a lot of semis could be coming down 116th down the road more? Because right now, they can't because they don't have a good turnaround. They're coming right down our main drag and turning down 60, or 84th, or whatever it is.
Well, Kevin, right now, we haven't noticed too many big trucks, for which we're grateful, but certainly to get out of our property can take a while, depending on the time that you leave in the morning. And so I just imagine with another 1,200 dwellings there, there will be a lot of traffic. Just wanted to make my concern known that way.
Okay. Thanks, Counselor McLean. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so it looks like you're off, Ms. Warren. Thanks very much for being here this evening to make a presentation. Was there anybody else that wished to come forward and make a presentation? Absolutely. Thanks so much for waiting it out. Welcome. So again, you've seen the routine a couple of times. If you'd just be so kind as to introduce yourself- If you'd just be so kind as to introduce yourselves. Those microphones are pretty decent, but as long as you have sort of one, each one of you has one in front of your face there. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Given and rest of council. I'm Wanda Gerard and this is Bill Reo. And we have property right adjacent to the proposal. We are in between the proposal and the railroad track in the southwest corner. So we have that little sliver that kind of comes up there. And so I have a couple of concerns. Our property is adjacent to the wetland area at that southeast corner. And it looks to me like there are going to be open spaces cut into that wetland. Currently, there aren't any open spaces in there. And so I'm wondering if the proposal includes opening up some spaces within that wetland area and providing like trails or parks. We have a lot of wildlife, a lot of birds that live in that area. And I would hate to see them disrupted. I'm also wondering just north of there, there's a storm sewer that would be close to our property. And I'm wondering if there's any plan to have any type of fencing or a berm or something built on that area. In addition, I have concerns regarding the traffic that comes down 116th and turns on to Range Road 712A. And so to get out of there in the morning right now is, is significant at certain times. And I feel that there, we're probably at the point where we need to have lights there to avoid anywhere between a five to 10 minute wait in the morning to turn left at that corner. And I'm wondering what the plan is to address that volume of traffic there.
Anything else you wanted to highlight for us?
Yeah, once they get that developed, are they, is there plans to change the speed limit along heading west on that 712A? Right now it's 80 kilometers, but people average about 110. Right? Like I think it should be the same as at least 116th. You know, no, no faster. Because there, there is a lot of people that do ride their bicycles along there. And the wildlife that crosses also, right?
So I heard sort of three issues you raised, a question with respect to access into the wetland and sort of the intention around that, whether it would be to clear any of it or to put trails through. I heard you, and I wanted to clarify a little bit, your concern around the storms who are to the north. Can you just clarify exactly what you mean? There's a storm pond that's sort of north of the wetland area.
Storm pond, I guess, right? And so to the west of that, are they going to have any, does it butt up against the road? I don't have the plan with.
Yeah, if I'm looking, it looks like it's directly west would be the railway track. So on the south of the storm water management facility would be the, thank you, would be the extension of 84th Ave that would go down. And then immediately to the west there where it says Lot 3, in between Lot 3 and the blue triangle, that's the railway right of way that's there. So basically that storm water management facility is the thing that's adjacent to the railway.
Okay.
Is that clear? No, that's okay. It's always difficult to orient on these maps, especially when you only see them sort of briefly flashed up on the screen. And then the third issue that I think you highlighted were two sort of related to 76th Avenue and access and future traffic improvements and speed. That sound like them? Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick question. If you put up that map again of 116th and I don't know, you're saying 76. You're worried about 76, but what are you also speaking to 116? It's 60 kilometers, but is it 80 a little further out? Or you're just speaking mostly to?
Oh, yeah. 76th Avenue.
76.
76th Avenue is 80.
And just a quick question. Does our land and annexation go to where that road goes down to Aco or is that county?
So the city boundary is represented on this map as the dotted red line. And so you can see that the entire plan.
Is that the, Mayor Given, where the boundary is there going north? Is that the road going to Aco? Do we own the east side of that all the way down and that road? Or are we just? I can't, just a question.
I can't tell if that's 124th.
All right, that's true.
Okay. I don't see anybody else with any other questions. Thanks to both you for being here this evening. As I said to some of the other delegations, you know, we've sort of taken these concerns and we'll have an opportunity to ask administration or follow up with the applicants. Was there anybody else that wished to speak to the Kensington ASP outline plan and associated land use by law amendment? Was there anybody else? If you'd like to make a correction, by all means, but you have to do it from here so that we can get it on the microphone. And so that everybody watching on YouTube can, can see you come to the mic. It's a big, it's a really big audience, you know.
Is it?
Yeah.
My concern with the Kensington project does have to do with the traffic load on 68th Avenue. But my apologies to Scott Rossler, who I said we had been in contact with about the repaving of 68th Avenue, which I realize isn't the business tonight. And that wasn't Scott Rossler. In the past, we have had no success with I S L coming to look at the culverts that were placed. That has caused the land. Yes, I hear a sigh of relief from Scott, but I did not want that to be on record. And that is the correction to my concern. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you very much for clarifying. And you probably heard a sigh of relief from at least half of the front row. I don't know if, it might have been a groan from the other part of the front row. But no, I appreciate, appreciate the good humor and appreciate willing to correct that. Thanks very much. So we will have an additional opportunity for further public presentations when we get to recessing the public hearing. So we won't have any additional motions this evening. And so I don't know if there are any questions at this time for administration. Administration and the applicant will have an opportunity to perhaps review some of the issues that were raised. And they may wish at the next portion of the public hearing to provide some response to some of those. Just recognizing that people don't always have every technical deal detail in their back pocket. But are there any questions from council for administration at this stage? Remembering that we'll have another opportunity to do that next council. Okay, I don't see anybody ringing in. So I will recess the public hearing. And do we need a motion? Looking to, yeah, okay. Thanks very much, Councilor Rice.
That the public hearing be recessed to September 18th at 6:30 PM.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that motion as to date, time and location? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Okay, thank you. That motion carries. The public hearing has been recessed. So those delegations that were here this evening, you're more than welcome to attend at the next meeting if you wish. You may hear some of the answers to some of the questions that you raised or issues that you raised, or you may not. But we will ensure that all the landowners in the area receive notification and that everybody that may wish to have an opportunity to address this proposed outline plan, air structure plan and associated land use by law amendments has an opportunity to speak. So this hearing has been recessed and we will return September 18th. We'll move on to our committee business. We had no items of unfinished business to report. So we will go straight into committee business, starting with item 9.1, the Community Growth Committee Meeting from August 22nd. Councilor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I've moved that council approve the Community Growth Committee Meeting from August 22nd as presented.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any errors or omissions we need to correct? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion passes, Councilor Clayton.
I would move that council designate Plan 9823990, Block 17, Lot 16, marketable. And in exchange for Plan 04239988, Block 20, Lot 17A and 19A. And speaking to the motion, those of you who are at committee had a further explanation of it. If there's any questions today, I'm sure administration would be happy to answer them. But speaking to the motion, I would, I support this motion for many reasons. One of them being the fact that this now allows our land to be a solid piece of land that is very usable in where it's located. And in turn, we will be able to provide an opportunity for Canadian Mental Health to build a facility that is in dire need for them. So there's a win-win on many levels here. And I think that overall, the facility that Canadian Mental Health wants to build is a perfect fit for when we're sort of building a diversified downtown. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Clayton. Any additional discussion or debate? Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will not be supporting this. I believe it's the wrong move. We heard a debate recently about $100 million performing arts center. And we want to build a building, which is a nice, beautiful building in an area that isn't going to be a higher end building. The building may look nice, but for actually tax and valuation, I think we could end up selling that land for a lot more money down the road if there's a performing arts center. And by Councilor Clayton's remarks about joining up the land, this area is already an area where people that are paying good taxes in this city will not bring their kids and have a picnic. They will not come in here, lay down a blanket, have a picnic in this area. This area needs a lot of work. And I believe that the information, it's already spoken out in the community. And this is the wrong move for us. It's too concentrated in this area and it should be more developed. And finishing this, when we got young families in the city and lower income, we'll spread them throughout the city so they're not distinguished or taken apart. Here, we're putting everything in one area, Rotary House, mental health, whatever kind of buildings you want to put in there. But take the rest of that land and just sell it like New York or whatever. Because nobody in this city is going down there to have a picnic and bring their young kids. I'm against it.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. Any other discussion or debate? I see Council, Councilor Rice banging away at her, her request to speak button. Councilor Rice?
I too will not support this motion. While I agree with the concept of the housing, I feel this is the wrong location for it. I feel it doesn't fit with the vision we have for this neighborhood. I think there are lots of other places where housing like this would be preferable for housing like this. So I won't support this motion.
Thanks, Councilor Rice. Any other discussion or debate? Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Surprisingly enough, I've actually seesawed on this, on this land swap issue. It's not really an issue to me because I believe that we need to have more options for affordable housing in the community and specifically ones that are geared towards a permanent supportive housing and enabling people to live a normal life. Part of what the seesaw was for me was, there's a part of me, when I take off my housing hat, my mental health background hat, and I put on my city planning hat, I do see a heavy concentration of a lot of the similar style stuff. And speaking like as, when I say stuff, I want to just clarify as housing types and service agencies all co-located in one area. I can speak from experience and that's where I'm going to go. I will be supporting this motion here tonight because I do believe that it will enable Canadian Mental Health Association to either build or have a lever to create potential revenue towards a build potentially in a better location. But I do believe that in the city of Grand Prairie, we are in dire needs of housing right now. My experience with the interagency council on housing and homelessness has stated all across the province that developments, as they used to all be thrown into one area now, the recommendation is to try to spread them out and try to find best locations so you don't get an over-concentration of that stuff. And for me, it's not a preferred site. But as a, as a city planner, I do believe there is a level of risk that we need to undertake. I don't, I don't think building affordable housing is a risk at all. In fact, it's a benefit to our entire community. But the level of risks, as Councilor McLean has stated, it could be the devaluation of a certain area of land in our downtown core. But this is a level of land and a level of risk that I'm willing to get behind and support because I know it's going to not only help the organization to find a good build and an appropriate build, perhaps in that location or somewhere else. But they will hold a very powerful piece of land that they could potentially turn over, sale in a private way. And that's another tool and lever that we can and they can use to further the cause of creating more affordable housing options in our community. So for those reasons, I do, I do support it. Councilor McLean is always saying, he who holds the land holds the power. And I'm willing to empower Canadian Mental Health Association to make the right decision and work alongside our city planners and our economic development manager to find the best fit. And if it is there, it's there. It just makes more sense to give them the space and the land so that they can find the revenue or the bricks and mortar to build for the people of our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Thiessen. Any other discussion or debate? Councilor Tool? Sorry, I keep hitting the clear cue button. You'll have to turn your microphone on there, Councilor Tool. There we go, next figure, gotcha.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I too will not support this move or this deal. I do feel that the downtown businesses on this side of 100th Avenue have dealt with a number of issues and concerns. And I think this will just maybe, I don't want to put a black mark on it, but it would just maybe solidifies some of the concerns that we've tried to deviate from. So I will not be supporting this.
Thanks, Councilor Tool. I see Councilor McLean's in the queue. I'll just take this opportunity so I'm not towards the end, sort of be in the middle of the discussion debate to say that I will be supporting the motion on a couple of different fronts. As highlighted by Councilor Clayton, I think the assembly of the land to the east provides, enhances the value of the land the city already has and provides us a parcel that ultimately we can redevelop. And, you know, so I think Councilor McLean is 100% right. I don't see anybody, I don't see any families going down there today to have picnics and roll a blanket, but that's because it's roads and places where there are houses knocked down. Assembling a reasonable plot of land may allow us to do some redevelopment that may, will provide us options on part, open spaces and redevelopment options. Second, my understanding of the design, although that's not a subject that we're, you know, that's not the subject of our motion today. But CMHA did share with us their intention and it certainly looks like high-quality design that will, I think, demonstrate a truly urban form of high-density housing in our downtown, which is a very positive thing. And additionally, this in so many ways is the right spot. Downtown, our central core, provides close access within walking distance to jobs, close access to medical services and to grocery stores. And so certainly the co-op, the opportunity to have this kind of housing in walking distance to a grocery store doesn't come around every day and certainly not, not at an affordable value like we can offer here in terms of land exchange. So for the use of the residents that will live in a building like this, if CMHA proceeds on the site, I think it's an ideal location. And ultimately, those are people that work in, can work in downtown businesses and do. These are people that can shop in downtown businesses and do. And for all those reasons, I think that it's a positive enhancement development on this site. Should that proceed, would be a positive enhancement in addition to our downtown. So I'm in support. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm just wondering if I'm missing something. A lot of times we'll hear about downtown associations in support of this, downtown association is not supportive of this. Was the downtown association asked all the businesses that were putting money in and putting through hardship to rebuild the road and their businesses have suffered? Are they in support of this move? Did we ask the individuals that got their money in downtown and own the land and own the buildings? Are they in support of this move? Because it is part of downtown. So was that asked or I oversee something, I need to read something here.
Yeah, absolutely. That actually wouldn't be a part of the discussion at this stage, Councilor McLean, because we don't have a development proposal in front of us. This is a choice of the city of Grand Prairie, whether we choose to A, make land marketable, so land that we own, the public owns. And should we choose to make it marketable, whether we, what we, how we wish to dispose of it? In this case, it's a land swap. So no, it's likely that adjacent landowners were not consulted. But I also wouldn't expect them to be when we don't have a development proposal in front of us today. Councilor Clayton?
I'm willing to wait if there's anybody else. I was going to call a motion, but I had been closing some comments if there's no one else.
Sure, we'll just see if there's, if there's anybody else that wishes to, to the debate. See, Councilor Tool had something further?
I wonder if there was other parcels of land that the city may have available to do a land swap, land swap with, other than this one.
I don't know if I would look to administration. I started looking at the city manager over my one shoulder and our manager of economic development and land, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Glavine care to handle that one?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We have not gone through an exercise with CMHA to look for suitable parcels for them. And I'm not aware of any. and I'm not aware of any off the top of my head that would be suitable for this development at this time.
Thanks very much. Mr. Glavine, question asked and answered. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a quick comment. I will be supporting the motion. I, the need for this type of affordable housing is real. I'm banking on the partnership to deliver those services. I think Canadian Mental Health is in great position to know the needs of their clients. Yeah, and I think that, and I must say, that the accumulation of another parcel of land in the downtown strikes a chord with me as well. It's important first to do so. And we can take advantage of that roadway, so we have a larger parcel to do something really good for the downtown. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Radburn. I see Counsel Thieson in the queue?
Yeah, just going to make one further comment in regards to, I guess, the experience that I had. It's no secret that I used to work for Canadian Mental Health Association in the Fletcher Building as a case management and client support development officer. It was proud work. It was short-lived, though, because the building had to close down due to its own issues, not by the issues of the people. One of the things about providing people stable housing in our community, especially stable and supported housing, no matter where it goes, is that you see a reduction in the use of emergency services. You see a reduction in crime, and you see a reduction in people who suffer through anxiety, especially if they have those supports there to help guide them through their life when they need it at those critical moments in time. It didn't work out for the Fletcher Building, and I understand some of the concerns of my council peers. But my concern is the fundamental right that human beings should be given access to housing. We're just giving access to the land. This is very preliminary, and I'm confident that our administration work with CMHA is going to produce something that is going to benefit our community in a variety of ways, no matter which way, shape, or form it takes place. And as Counsel Clayton stated earlier, it is a very fine design of a building, so if it ends up going on that plot of land, it's not going to be a black mark in our community. And the thing is, is when we stabilize people who need housing, they actually turn into productive community players in our community as well. So if we can give them the proper tools by which to live in, they will be proactive members of our community and will strive to do what is best, not just for the area, but for themselves as well. And I saw that in action when I worked at the Fletcher Building. When people are getting their supports, they're getting better. Our emergency services, the use on them and the tax on them went down. And yeah, I don't think this is bad in any way, shape, or form. And again, this is just very preliminary, so let's approve this and move forward, and then we can discuss what way, shape, or form that we're going to create this type of housing for people in our community who sorely need it.
Thanks, Counsel Thieson. Counsel Clayton?
Given, in closing, I just wanted to address a few things that were brought up. Following Counsel Thieson's comments, this won't be a black mark on the community, on the downtown business owners. There was thorough discussion at committee level in regards to what this facility could potentially look like, the access, the clientele, the senior clientele that will be moved into this facility from Willow Place. So it'll be a different traditional Canadian mental health clientele. In turn, they can walk to a pharmacist, they can walk to a drugstore, they can walk to the downtown stores, and it's a perfect fit for a Canadian mental health client in regards to the location. And they actually will be great complementary residents to the downtown businesses. So I think that never mind what the piece of the plot of land does when it's solidified for the city, the addition of that facility to the downtown core will be a win for the downtown residents as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Clayton. That was our close, and so we'll have closed discussion or debate. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries with five to three. We will move on. Counsel Clayton? Think you had additional business?
We had one additional motion, and I apologize. There we go. I would move that council designate Road Plan 9824660 marketable and sell for the price of $167,591.40. For those who aren't aware, it's a piece of land that goes at the end of a road between the casino and the service plaza inn. The administration has worked with the landowner. There's no need for that to be a roadway, or sorry, has worked with the potential future hospital as well as the residents in the area. There's no need for the city to have that land anymore for a road. So therefore, we have decided to sell it.
Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. Any discussion or debate? I don't see anybody in the queue, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Clayton, anything else you want to highlight from your set of minutes?
No. Everything else is there in writing. Thanks.
Thanks, Counsel Clayton. So we'll move on to Community Living Committee meeting from August 22nd. I think Counsel O'Toole, you're going to step in for Counsel Tarrant.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move the council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, August 22nd, 2017, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any errors or omissions that we want to correct before we adopt that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole?
Yes, I've got item 9.2.1, Tiny Hands of Hope Garden, that was brought at the meeting and discussed. And I move the council approve the area west of the playground within Muscatay Park as a designated location for the Tiny Hands of Hope Garden.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Counsel Logan?
Just if I could get a little bit more information about how large the park will be and how it will be, what message it will be carrying?
As far as I understand, it'll be a smaller park with some benches, basically to just sort of reflect. It'll be in the Muscatay Park, next to the playground. So individuals will be able to come from the hospital and also come to the park and enjoy some solitude, reflection. And it'll be very simple, nothing, nothing beyond expectations, just very simple.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Counsel Logan, the only thing I would add is that the intent of this designation is that identifying a site will allow the Tiny Hands of Hope not-for-profit community organization to work with the city to help make some enhancements to that area. And so their intention is to provide some, I think, some financial support for that. In fact, at the committee meeting, I think they related that they've already organized a fundraiser event, and the intent of that fundraiser was to raise funds to be able to make some improvements to this area once it's been identified. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Any other questions, comments, or discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel O'Toole, anything else to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, we had two, trying to think of the word, delegations. And they were from the Camp Heelahart, and they expressed thanks for the funding that they received from the city and also the Grand Prairie and Area Council on Aging. They also gave a report on some of the items that they are dealing with, such as the Meals on Wheel program in Grand Prairie.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole, and thanks for stepping in for Counsel Tarrant to handle those two items of business. We'll move on to item 9.3, the Community Safety Committee meeting from August 29th. Counsel Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Community Safety Committee meeting held Tuesday, August 29th, 2017, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. I think I just called you O'Teeson.
Arrgh, I be Scottish, but I can be Irish today.
Okay. I don't, yeah, I don't think of that accent. I don't, I don't think it passes.
Oh, I gotta work on that.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate on the set of minutes? Any errors or omissions other than Counsel Thieson's accent that we need to correct?
Very much correct.
Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Thieson?
Right, there was only one piece of business on the agenda for that day, and we're going to take care of it here at council tonight. And there goes the recommendation says that council award tender T-44-552-17 to Wapiti Gravel Suppliers Limited for $308,288.93, exclusive GSD as the lowest qualified bidder, meeting city specifications. Now, this, speaking to this motion, it is really just minor geometric upgrades along the intersection of 98th Street and 101st Avenue. Administration had noted that there is a lot of pedestrian traffic that moves through there, and the idea is to better light the area and to provide crosswalk and also, I guess, pedestrian-lighted intersection. So as they go to cross, they could push the button across the street. Eventually, this will lead to a widening of the road in a dedicated turn lane for people to move throughout the downtown core, around the Montrose Cultural Site.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I had one observation about the site, and I guess I just, I certainly support the motion and will be voting for it. And I guess I just wanted to raise for administration, and there may not be anybody here that can answer this. I'm concerned about the southwest corner. I think the design that we saw at committee showed that there would be a light standard that goes up there. And I just would like administration to follow up, just to sort of alleviate my concerns that the sidewalk pedestrian realm there, like the sidewalk isn't going to be taken up with a big light post. I wasn't able to tell from the schematic that we saw at the committee meeting what the impact will be on that space. But again, on that south, southwest corner that's directly adjacent to the existing building there where the dentist's office is. I don't know, Counsel Thieson, if you have it in front of you, but I just couldn't quite get it from the schematic.
Yeah, actually, I do have it in front of me. I may be able to, like, the schematic was pretty hard to read. I noticed that committee as well, and I looked it up. I think part of the proposal was to have like a bulb out, so that pedestrians had a place to stand on in the corner. And I think that would alleviate your concerns on that southwest corner in this drawing here. They do have it bulbed out. Now, I am definitely not an engineer, and I didn't do these drawings, but I'm pretty sure when we received the report, that they mentioned that there would be a pedestrian bulb out alongside that crossing. But it'd be worthwhile to just get that background there from our admin and go from there, just to ensure that, you know, I'm right and your question's answered.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Counsel Thieson. I certainly remember the pedestrian sort of safety zone or pork chop, as we sometimes call them, that will be implemented there on the northwest side. It's just that southwest again. And happy to support it, because these lights are certainly needed. Just that sort of sense of confidence about how it's going to be installed would be helpful. But I feel that I've raised that issue. Administration's heard it, and it'll get looked at before it actually gets, somebody gets in there and starts digging. Is there any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Motion carries. Counsel Thieson, anything else you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Well, we were one and done, but not quite as efficient as when Counsel Rice chaired Community Growth presented at the last council meeting.
Thanks very much, Counsel Thieson. Well, I think that brings us to the community, sorry, the Corporate Services Committee meeting, and Counsel Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held this Tuesday, August 29th, 2017, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions that we need to address? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counsel Radburn, anything you'd like to highlight from that set of minutes?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, we just, we had the one agenda item, but the two motions were forthcoming. First was that we receive for information the unaudited financial statement to June 30th, 2017 that estimates a surplus year-end of $700,000. The second motion was passed by committee. Admin was directed to bring back in a report back to committee mandatory and discretionary city business expenditures. So four years of unused amounts in aggregate and by individual counselor for those expenditures. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Radburn, and thanks for that update from the committee. That does handle all of our committee business. Counsel Thieson, you had a question or comment?
Yeah, thank you very much. Something that we discussed on the outstanding items list is that we have the remuneration review coming forward. And I think before we exit this term, on the 18th, we're going to have a council committee of the whole or a special council meeting to address that. Looking forward to that. I just wanted to make a comment that this will be coming forward alongside that discussion of mandatory discretionary expenditures. And I look forward to when that comes forward to administration having that discussion with council for the incoming council.
Thanks, Counsel Thieson. Counsel Radburn?
Yes, but this is, the motion is somewhat relative to that discussion, but not really. That motion stands on its own. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Radburn. Again, I think that handles all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence this evening, and during the delegation, I made the proclamation. So I don't think there's a need for a motion with respect to that. Tonight, though, we do have a notice of motion with respect to the procedure bylaw. Counsel Radburn?
If it's in order, I'll make the motions, Mayor Given?
Sure.
I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C962U, being an amendment to the procedure bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. And just to clarify, our intention is to have first reading and then follow up with second and third at our next council meeting?
Nope.
Tonight?
Depending the wishes of council?
Yeah, no, I just, I think, I want to look at our Legislative Services Manager. I don't think we are, we haven't been presented with the amendments in our package tonight. I think the intent is to have it come at the subsequent council meeting. And so I think our business today is actually to have the notice of motion to reset. We had intended to have them for today's meeting. They're not available, and so we're now looking to go to September 18th. Would you like to make that motion, Counsel Radburn?
I'll make the motion as Mayor Given has stated. The TV time, just to clarify, this is a, for those, the huge audience and those watching, this, the amendments address the need to align the city's service areas with the directorships for which they report in order to support the reorganization which recently occurred. So it's a piece of business that is important first to finish up before the end of the term. Thank you.
Absolutely, and thanks, Counsel Radburn. Just in conferring with Legislative Services Manager, she corrected me and said, as a matter of fact, since it's a notice of motion, you don't need a notice of motion, a motion to make a notice of motion. And so we have our notice of motion. There will be a motion at the subsequent council meeting. Counsel McLean?
Second notice of motion, because we had the last one. We got another motion, notice of motion for the final meetings.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Never seen that happen before, but.
No, it's, you're exactly right. You're exactly right, yeah. But it is, you know, with the realignment of the organization, this is one of those housekeeping items where our procedure bylaw actually specifies what our committees are and who they report to. We do have fewer directors now, and some of those alignments have to change, and so. So that's what it's intended to do. We'll make sure that it gets the review that's required before it shows up at council, and we'll look at it September 18th, you know, or not. We'll be optimistic, absolutely, okay? We'll move on to council member reports. I think we had a report from Counsel Rice with respect to the Grand Spirit Foundation, and they had an opening of a something that lasted a while. Counsel Rice?
I'm very pleased and proud to say that on the 24th, we took part in the official grand opening of the Lakeview Seniors Housing Facility, an awesome facility. It's 148,000 square feet. It's, there are 150 housing units, and over 175 seniors will be able to make their home there. It is absolute proof of the success of collaboration. This is a joint project with 12 municipalities, the provincial government and the federal government. And certainly, it didn't spring up overnight, and also, I should say, private citizens who donated the land. So an awesome collaboration to produce this facility. There are some two-bedroom units, some larger than the average unit, to give seniors certainly all sorts of options in terms of their housing. So again, I would have to thank Counsel Radburn, who was in on the start of this project and stepped aside, so I had the honor of being in on the tail end of this project. And indeed, it is a pretty awesome way to end 38 years in municipal politics.
Absolutely. Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. And Counsel Rice, thanks very much. I noted at the, at the I noted at the, at the grand opening, when you spoke on behalf of Grand Spirit, I just wanted to acknowledge how gracious it was of you to, to acknowledge Counselor Radburn's time on Grand Spirit Foundation, and the fact that the chair of the Grand Spirit Foundation was more than happy to let you speak, I think speaks volumes about the, the character of people that we have in the local government in our region. Thanks for your work on this, Counselor, Counselor Rice, and thanks for that update. We'll start our council member roundtable with Counselor Thiessen, and we'll work our way around. Counselor Thiessen.
All right, well, I, I did have a few things. Actually, I wanted to thank Counselor Rice for being so gracious as well with Counselor Radburn there, as, as well as all the other people that came before her at the grand opening of the Lakeview Complex. I'm going to get there, because I do have to talk about some things. I wasn't here at the last council meeting, so I couldn't rant and rave about the Bear Creek Folk Music Festival that I happened to be able to take in for three days. I took it as a spectator, as, as a supporter slash funder on council, and as a volunteer, just, you know, bird's eye view of everything. It was, it was a glorious, glorious weekend. It was a little bit cruel. The volunteers all worked very, very hard, though, and the organization ran seamlessly, like, everywhere went. I was actually very impressed as a former festival promoter myself with how well it ran, talking with a lot of the, the acts that came through. They said that it was amazing, that this festival still was, was just doing it, and at such a small scale, because we used to go in to play the bigger folk music festival circuits, and they said it was nice to have an intimate audience. Now, for me, it's a dream to get 3,000 people into a field at any point. So for them, they're used to playing in front of 10,000. Hopefully, eventually, one day, we'll get there, but it was very, very appreciated for that. As a volunteer, I helped out with the sale of 50/50 tickets, and I got to meet every artist because they gave me a Sharpie marker and six posters to get them all to sign. And so that was very good, and I was very grateful to do that. I also happened to get wrangled into doing Facebook Live shots for the Folk Music Festival, bless you, Mayor Given, from the organizing crew, you know? Put a microphone or a camera in front of my face, I'm willing to talk to anybody. I ran around for three days talking with different people in and around the event, and what I realized very quickly is, as many familiar faces as there were in the event, I actually went to the faces that I didn't really know for the most part. And almost every person I talked to, out of 20 total, were from out of town. Some as far away from Vancouver, there's people from Winnipeg, Edmonton, Calgary, and we got a few of them on Facebook Live on video. So definitely, for me, it just reiterated what kind of a tourism draw arts festivals can be in our community, and proud to support it and proud to continue to support it. A great job to the organizers, and thank you to all the volunteers who made that happen. One of them sitting right here in our audience here today as well. Secondly, on the 24th, I did go to the Grand Spirit Senior Facility in Claremont. I just want to echo Counselor Rice's sentiments. It is a beautiful place. It's, the rooms are gorgeous, and the people there are so caring, and the seniors that were already living there seem so happy with what they had, and the view is immaculate, overlooking a little lake, Lake Views. Sounds like a perfect name. I just wanted to also mention that I did my due diligence as the Director of Community Safety. As I was leaving the building, Counselor Tarrant was coming off of the elevator, and I said, hey, and then I thought he said something back. I turned around and struck my shoulders, kept walking and beelining out the door, but it wasn't a door. It was a window, and I walked right into it with a loud smack. In fact, I broke my nose. I didn't think I did, but I have new bumps on my nose here. But the cool thing out of that, and why I did my due diligence as director, or not director, but the Chair of Community Safety, I think I said director twice, sorry, sorry, Director Gronty, wherever you are. But I got pulled aside. Counselor Tarrant was, was kind enough. I didn't think I was bleeding. I said, no, that was really loud, but I'm okay. And everyone was looking terrified, and Counselor Tarrant said, no, you're bleeding. And so I went to the bathroom, got fixed up. But a couple of things happened out of that. It was the first ever incident report that they had to write at the Lakeview Complex, so that was really good. When they went to find the sutures strips to try to help put my nose back together, in fact, they didn't have any. They only had one big orange Band-Aid, which I put over my nose, and it was the A&amp;W Ride for MS that day, so I just color coordinated with that later on. So that was good. So they updated their first aid kit, which is great, and then they realized that that window was just too clean and too clear and was the same size as a door, and weren't they happy that a city councillor walked into it instead of one of the senior residents? So they said they would put up posters, maybe a table, some flowers to mitigate the risk of any of the seniors getting hurt. So all in a day's work, you know, sometimes you gotta take the licks and make lemonade out of the lemons that you get, but I was more than happy to do that. My eyes only watered for a day and a half. Finally, today, I, I'm dressed like a big pylon, and it was intentional. I happened to take part for my fourth year in a row for the AMA Back-to-School Event at Holy Cross School. I participated with Grand Prairie Storm Crime Prevention City Bylaw in getting the kids across the street safely and ensuring that people and parents were driving slow through the school intersection. So let this be from the Chair of the Community Safety Team, please slow down. School's back in session, and all our kids are valuable and could be our future. So be mindful as you drive on the road through those school zones. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll speak to two events, because my iPad went dead, and I don't know how, I attended a few events. One I'll speak to is the Northside A&amp;W for MS Day. Once again, it, it won, I think, in top A&amp;W in Canada, raised $45,000 or $47,000. So I think that's a very good thing to, in our community, just one of the restaurants raised that amount of money. And it, and a lot of people really, really participated. I think Counselor Rice was there, Counselor Toronto, and Counselor Thiessen. Now, I might have left after a few more came, but I didn't have to do any judging. I was happy. I had my teen burgers, and it was the day they switched it over from $1 for a teen burger to $2. So that was a change, and might have helped with some more money for MS. And I think most people know Northern Albert, probably know somebody or a couple of people that have MS, and I got a few good friends that have MS. The other one I want to speak to is the downtown. We, it was opened up the road, and then it was closed off. I think there was a councillor here that was wondering all about that, and we had the checkout in front of Better and Fred's. I don't know if that's 102nd or 103rd, whatever the, whatever it is. 101st, there we go. A lot of good work done. The benches aren't in, the bikes aren't in, but mostly everything is done. This council put a lot of money downtown, and I just hope for a future development that's going to be a good future development down the road, or I hope for the best. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Counselor Logan.
Three quick items. First was to acknowledge the meeting with the K-Division RCMP in Grand Prairie in the recent past, and I really treasure the commu, lines of communication that we've, that they and, and the city of Grand Prairie have worked out, and I think that it's been very, very good. The second thing I wanted to mention was Mamawee. I hope I got that concourse, which I went out the morning of the opening of it to go and look with sadness over the name that should have been there, which, of course, had to do with the Scots. And I just think we have to keep our memories on that, that we can do something with the rest of that area that recognizes the fact that it was the site of two schools through which went probably over the years, thousands of students. And the final thing I'm quite happy about is today, I attended at the McKenzie Place in the hospital and found that I had, finally, a clean record for my back that's been, of course, of fair angst over the course of the last half dozen years, and actually have been pain-free now for about a couple of months.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Congratulations. That's good news. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll just touch on a few things that haven't been touched on. I attended the Transit Master Plan at many fellow councillors here. It was a great turnout from various stakeholder groups and good discussion, sort of the first sort of stage of discussion, and, and I think that it was well-received overall, and so it was nice to see so many people attending. I also attended the Elected Officials ICF Stakeholder Group Meeting with Mayor Given and Counselor Tarrant, and as well, attended the Tri-Municipality, Tri-Municipal Industrial Plan Meeting with Mayor Given, and other things, I think, have been touched on. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple of things that haven't been mentioned. One is I attended the Hillside Area Redevelopment Final Open House, August 23rd. I believe that's coming to a public hearing here at our last meeting of this term on September 18th. And I attended for about an hour the Surf Rider Competition at Eastlink Center on the August 26th. So kudos to our team for getting that event. It's a sanctioned surf rider event, and you can only grow from there. And finally, I was able to go a little trip down memory lane for Lauren. Went to the Ford/Montrose Site Plaque unveiling. Yeah, as I mentioned there, I think I spent 25 years on that site with my work life and then another three years of my schooling life, so that area is near and dear to my heart. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Once again, I attended the K-Division Meeting. I thought that was very, was very uplifting, knowing that the RCMP have got a lot of things on the go and are very supportive with the city. Attended also the plaque unveiling at the Montrose Cultural Center Transit Master Plan Workshop. I attended the street project unveiling, and I also attended the chamber event that was held at the Sparks Place, and it was very well-attended out there. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice.
I attended at the MS Campaign at A&amp;W. I bring that up, although it's been mentioned because those of us who agreed to judge had to pick a media partner. I picked Justin Payroll from Q99, and I would point out, we won. Just saying. I also have to say, huge, huge kudos to the Cultural and Heritage Department at the Montrose Plaque unveiling. Charles Daw spoke. It was absolutely fascinating. He must have spoke for over 20 minutes on the history of the site, and not a person moved. Everybody was just fascinated, and he did point out that from the time history has tracked that land, it has always been used for education purposes, which is a pretty impressive history of, of that land. It was a, it, you know, it could have been a terribly boring ceremony. In fact, it was fascinating. And I, so again, kudos for the, the research that they do, and the meeting with the Transit Master Plan Consultant, as well as the opening and closing of 101st Street. I attended that, so thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So I'll just try and cover a couple of events that weren't covered, either that I was the only one in attendance at, or that weren't covered by the council members. On Tuesday, the 22nd, I was at Prairie Mall for the grand opening of the new Marshalls location. That was the third location in the TJX company portfolio, so now they have a Winners, a HomeSense, and a Marshalls, all in Grand Prairie. The, it was my first opportunity to go into the renovated wing of the Prairie Mall, which looks fantastic. Would encourage the community to get up there and check it out. Marshalls is the second major tenant in that end of the mall, with more to come over the next little while, and so congratulations to Lionel and the rest of the mall team there. On Wednesday, the 23rd, I had two individuals make an appointment to come and visit me. They came to the city of Grand Prairie as a result of our submission to the Cannabis Secretariat. City Council, remember that we put together a position paper on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie for submission to the Cannabis Secretariat. All those position papers and submissions were published, and so these two gentlemen are from 420 Clinic, who currently operate in Canmore, Lethbridge, and Calgary. They were, really thought that the city of Grand Prairie submission hit some highlights. They were also able to increase my understanding about some of the other potential outcomes or considerations with respect to the coming legalization of cannabis. On Thursday, the 24th, I was here with a number of other members of council to meet with candidate for the United Conservative Party leadership, Doug Schweitzer. Appreciated him taking the opportunity to meet with Grand Prairie City Council when he was in our region. Certainly, I think it continues the city's approach of ensuring that we have our doors open to City Hall to any provincial politician or hopeful politician, to ensure that they're aware of the issues in our community and in the north, and look at that as an opportunity to increase their understanding. And later that day, I had an opportunity to attend at Muscat City Park to help mark International Overdose Awareness Day. I really appreciated the opportunity to join in a community effort to acknowledge the fact that we do have an ongoing public health crisis, not just in our community, but in, in Canada, and certainly in Western Canada in particular. And I appreciated the efforts to recognize those individuals and organizations in our community who are doing good work, and I appreciated being gifted a naloxone kit that I have with me in my vehicle now. It was new information to me that these are available at just about any pharmacy in Alberta, certainly in Grand Prairie. People can receive them for free. You may be requested to provide some information, but you're not obligated to provide the information that's requested. You can also attend, you could also pick up a naloxone kit at HIV North, and they can provide training on how to use it. Naloxone is a substance that can inhibit an opioid overdose and provide the time that's required for the person to get medical treatment. And so I appreciate having one, and I would encourage other members of our community to think about whether it's something that you might want to have, just like a first aid kit in your vehicle or around in the office, to see if you have an opportunity to save a life. And with that, we'll call our meeting, oh, Counselor Rice.
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this before. I just want to make council aware, if anyone is interested, on Thursday morning at 9:00 AM at the Holiday Inn, I will be attending the Citizenship Court, whereby up to 110 new Canadians will be sworn in. And if you've never been to a Citizenship Court, they are absolutely fabulous. Just, they're very inspiring, and I wanted to make council aware of that.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Well, and with that, we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.